Even fear, we can also acknowledge feeling beauty or contentment. And that part of our human experience is to learn how to hold the complexity of all things. One of the things I like to do in initiating a grounding process of getting together, gathering together, and establishing place, time and space and place, is to really think about, again, the land that we're on right now, the people that came before us, the native people that have been here are still here. They include the Chinook, the Clackamas, the Cathlomette, the Multnomah, Twallitan and Cowalts, just to name a few. And part of our work in building resilience is to acknowledge our histories, both personally and collectively, so that we can build true healing. And as we move forward as an organization and as individuals, I would ask that we are brave to honor our histories so that we can envision a better future together and individually. If you want to bring your hands to your heart for a couple of breaths, just to make any sacred connection or intent for this meeting, for this community, for this moment, please feel free to do so. May we honor the lineages of yoga that come from South Asia and India. And as we use these tools, maybe be respectful so that we might help to liberate and heal all. You can open your eyes if they're closed. And thank you all for being here. I'm going to hand it over to Lauren right now.
Thank you, Angelina. And thanks, everyone, for coming. It's awesome to see everyone here. Um, so Living Yoga is an organization that believes in showing up for one another. And my experience is that this organization has always been very authentic with one another. And so I just felt like I wanted to share space with all of you and have this opportunity to just get on the same page about Living Yoga's status. So I will just share some updates and all the staff have updates to share today. Um, obviously, COVID-19 has impacted all of us as individuals and as families and every single business and nonprofit. So I just want to let you know, we've all been thinking about you personally and thinking about our students and our partners. I have been working really closely with staff and our board and several long-term advisors who joined my COVID-19 task force. And we've been strategizing how Living Yoga can best fulfill our mission right now, but also make sure that we're here long-term to help people in the future. Luckily, Living Yoga's been fortunate to have some really good years recently, successful years, and we stick to our lean budget. So we've had cash reserves to rely on during this unprecedented crisis so far, and I'm really grateful for that. But even though we planned for a rainy day or rainy season, this is something that nobody was fully prepared for, just in terms of the flood of financial and program impact. So just some recaps to protect the health of our students and our volunteers. We paused all 34 weekly in-person classes. We also canceled our March volunteer training, which had been a full training. And we've had major losses of revenue. So we had to cancel Yogathon, which typically raises around $40,000 or two months of operating expenses. In addition to that, we have canceled all of our in-person fee-for-service trainings. And we haven't been invoicing partner sites that typically would contribute to the cost share. So we had anticipated, before COVID, we had anticipated earning $45,000 in fee-for-service revenue this year. So in total, we're looking at an impact of about a third of our annual operating budget. I also expect this will impact our annual fundraising event, which we typically hold in October. So we are planning for options for that, but we're also looking at where we can decrease expenses if needed, if our revenue isn't sufficient. I'm continuing to submit grant applications. And the foundations are completely overwhelmed with the level of requests that they're receiving from every nonprofit. So I don't know what that will look like this year. But to end on a bright side, our PPP loan application, I just got word that it looks like we got approved. So I'm very hopeful that we will see those temporary funds show up very shortly, which would be huge. So right now, Living Yoga students, just like all of us, are experiencing uncertainty and fear. We know that many of them have increased risk because of health disparities. And we also know that they're at higher exposure because many of our students live in... Oh. I'm in the Living Yoga office today. I'm the only one in the building. But I was worried about my Wi-Fi connection at home, so I have to move. Our students are dealing with health disparity, and they're also living in confined spaces or locked facilities. So mind-body awareness and our trauma-informed downregulation and our resiliency trainings really are needed now more than ever. We hoped that those pauses that we made in programs would be short-term, but it's really becoming clear that our partner site locations won't be able to welcome us back the way we had been before, probably for several months. So in March, we launched our first online weekly class for the teens at Daybreak. Thank you, Harry. I see you here today. And we've also launched two online weekly Living Yoga classes for the recovery community through Alano Club and Taber Space. Those classes are highly appreciated and they will continue, but attendance has been limited. And we just continue to hear from partner sites that they're not in a position right now to offer something like that, just due to the constraints that they're dealing with right now. But we're committed to making sure that our students and our larger community have our support now and long-term. So we set some immediate priorities, and I'll just cover those now. They're in no particular order. So the four priorities we set, one is to provide body-based resiliency tools to essential workers, employee groups, social service providers and marginalized communities. We are actively promoting our new online version of this group learning that's facilitated by our three trainers. We did a demo recently, it was very well received. We feel that this fee-for-service offering fulfills our mission and it also is critical to our long-term financial sustainability. Number two is our Resilience Rising fundraising campaign. So that's an emergency fundraising campaign we're doing instead of Yogathon this year in response to COVID-19. And it's just really critical that we stay connected to our committed donors and that we reach out to new audiences who will invest in these resiliency skills and in Living Yoga's future. Priority, the three, supporting, engaging and leveraging our volunteers. Living Yoga wouldn't exist without volunteers, and we have 200 volunteers now. So we're going to need their help in new ways to help launch and promote our online trainings and to help us fundraise and to just make sure that we can survive this transition so that we can get back to practicing with students in places where they otherwise wouldn't have access to the tools that we know they deserve. And the fourth priority is branding and mission clarity. So this year, we've been working a lot trying to figure out what language best describes what we do and also on evaluating just the breadth and depth of our impact. So we're using the language "body-based resiliency." We do this through mind-body awareness, downregulation, support and empowerment skills. Our work liberates individuals and also inspires systemic change. And our commitment to equity and social justice are still a foundation of everything that we do. And so we want to make sure that that's understood in our branding and mission clarity. The priority is just to make sure other people, you know, understand that who we are as an organization and what we do, and that it doesn't matter if it's in-person classes or social justice learning initiatives or online training, that these all fulfill our mission and they're needed. So, yeah, I think we're going to continue to face some really tough realities in the coming weeks and months. But we also know sustainability requires resiliency. So who better than Living Yoga to get through all of this? Yeah, and I just, I get emotional because I have the best staff I could ever ask for. I feel like it's an incredible team and our board is incredible. And just watching people who have been involved since the very beginning come together, it means a lot. So we have all these people who keep showing up for each other and for our students, and I'm just really grateful. So those are my updates. It's a lot to take in. Each staff member has some updates today. They want to share. One of our newer staff members, Lorraine, has graciously kind of shifted her new position because of all of this. And so she's been primarily focused on helping us transition to online work, which is not an area that Living Yoga had been doing before this. So she'll share a little bit about that, and then others will share updates also.
Hey, everyone. I'm Lorraine Diaz. I'm our data and program specialist. And many of you, our team greatly values that in-person connection. I think we're used to doing our work in person and it's different for us. It's been quite a... A tenure goes about a pivot being one foot planted, grounded, you know, on the floor while you shift with your other foot and change directions, visibility with open, you know, trying to move forward. I feel like that's where we are. I've been with Living Yoga for three months now, very interesting three months, challenging three months. And when I first started, I was in my first staff meeting and thought, wow, this must be a mighty team, right? To... Is... And then I realized, it became very apparent that we have this incredible community that is the foundation of Living Yoga. We've got an incredible board, the volunteers are so... And even then, there's this extended community that is forming this foundation behind us that's allowing us in this moment, I think, to feel grounded with one foot while we pivot. And so as we pivot, we're moving online and we're trying to mine, you know, what does it look like to hold trauma-informed space in virtual space? And we are prioritizing security on platforms like Zoom. That's really important. But we're going to need access to new platforms and technology. And this means our staff has to get up to date with how to use these platforms, how to go from in-person events to virtual events. And all of that means that there are some costs involved that we hadn't anticipated. I think what's also exciting is that we've tried a couple of... Wednesday night, our trainers came together and did a training to see what it felt like to do it online. And it went really well. And I think that having some of our work online could mean greater access for even more people. And we hadn't necessarily anticipated that either. So while this pivot is essential right now, I also think that it moves us forward in investing in access for Living Yoga. And I'm excited about that. Avery is our development director, and she's going to walk us through our Resilience Rising campaign. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Lorraine. And so nice to see everyone. I am like crying over here because it's just, it's like amazing that we have so many people on this call who care. So thank you. As Lauren mentioned, we had to cancel our Yogathon, which is a huge fundraiser for us. And it was, it was pretty devastating to me personally and to staff because we had just put so, so much work into it. But luckily, we are able to use a lot of the same materials and platforms that we had intended to use for Yogathon for this new emergency fundraising campaign. We're calling it Resilience Rising. It functions very similarly to Yogathons. So you'll get, if you want to participate in this way, you can set up a fundraising page, kind of like a Kickstarter page, and I'll show you what it looks like in just a minute. I'll share my screen. But the fundraising page allows you to set a personal fundraising goal. Maybe you want to raise $500 to support Living Yoga, maybe 1,000. You get to decide that. You can kind of personalize your page with a profile picture and a little blurb about you or why you care about this work, why you feel it's meaningful, especially at this time. And then you can just share the link to that page with your friends, family, coworkers, neighbors, anyone who you think might want to support what we do. I wanted to acknowledge that even in normal times, it can feel challenging to do fundraising. It can be uncomfortable for us to ask for financial support. And I know that that can feel particularly challenging right now as there is so much need. And I definitely share some of those feelings. But I will say, I've spent the last few weeks really researching the fundraising landscape. And I just can't stress enough that now actually is a really good time to ask for support. You know, for people that do have the capacity to give, there are people that still have jobs that are receiving stimulus checks, that have a lot of resources to share, and they want to be generous. They want to support. So I hope that we'll feel inspired to reach out. And people really can be so generous during times of crisis like this. So it's a great time to reach out, and we need it. So I don't take that lightly. So I have developed a short document of just talking points that if you do want to do some fundraising for us, you're welcome to kind of lean on those. They just explain, you know, who Living Yoga is, what we do, why it's important, and what we're actually using these funds for right now. That can be a really important thing to share with people. So I'm happy to share those with anyone who's interested in helping with some fundraising. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with everyone now and just show you what these fundraising pages look like and how you can set one up if you're interested in doing that. So bear with me for a moment. Okay, can we see that? Can you give me a thumbs up? See it? Okay. All right, so this is Living Yoga's website. I'll just take you back to the home screen to start. This is our homepage of the website, living-yoga.org. And you can get to our new Resilience Rising fundraising by coming to the navigation bar and just selecting Resilience Rising. This has some information about the campaign, why it's so important that we have this fundraising campaign right now. And then you can get to our fundraising pages from this site here. So I'm just going to click "Make a Donation." That takes you to our fundraising platform through a company called Everyday Hero. So here's the homepage of the platform. It's really cool because it has this sort of like thermometer that shows us what our goal is. We're hoping to raise $45,000 by the end of May. Shows us how much we've raised so far, how many donations have been made and days left to give. And then if you scroll down, you can see there's some information on how to set up a fundraising page here. Same information that was on our website is included down below as well. And then you can see our top fundraisers at the moment, who's been raising the most money so far, which is kind of fun if you have a competitive streak. So if you want to start fundraising, you can click this "Start Fundraising" button. And that will take you to this very brief page. It shows there's three steps. Basically, you'll fill out this little form where you'll just enter in the page title, whatever you want to call it. I've been setting up a test page that'll show you in just a moment how much you want to raise. It'll lead you through a few prompts, basically to add your profile picture, make any edits to your profile story, and then set your fundraising goal. Once you make your page, this is what will, this is an example of what it will look like. This is just a test page. So if you had a profile picture, it would fill in right here. You could set your goal here. And then this is sort of the boilerplate template profile information that fills in. You can edit any of this. So to edit your photo, this information, or the amount of money you'd like to raise, you'll just click on this "Edit Supporter" page here. And that allows you to make any changes to your page. And you'll just want to remember to save at the bottom. And then I'll show you real quickly what someone's page looks like. That's in process. So here's Sue's page. Hi, Sue. I think you're on the call today. So Sue's uploaded a picture here. It shows what her goal is, how much she's raised so far, how much she still needs. If I wanted to donate to Sue's page, I could click "Give Now" right here. Sue did a beautiful job. She kind of rewrote the story here, explaining why she cares so much about this organization, why it's so important now to give. And then this is really awesome. So as you scroll down, you can see this feed of people who've given to her, and Sue's able to thank them as well. They also get an email of that thank you. So it's just kind of a fun way to engage with your people who are supporting you. Okay, I'm going to stop the screen share so we can come back together. So we're going to have some breakout sessions a little later. If anybody has questions and some Q and A time, you're welcome to ask that. And I'll start wrapping up here, but I just, I just want to stress that the... This campaign will be most effective if we have a lot of people participating. So no one person has to raise $10,000. If we can all raise a little bit, it really goes a long way. So I encourage you to set up a page and try, even if it's just a couple hundred bucks that you're able to raise from friends and family. And then Lorraine's going to be sharing. It looks like she already has. If you check the chat box, there's the links to that Resilience Rising landing page if you want to check it out or make a donation. And then there's also the link to set up a fundraising page as well. Yeah, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me directly. My email address is just my first name, avery@living-yoga.org. Thank you. I would like to pass it to our newest staff member, Mira.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Avery. So my name is Mira Mosini, and I am one of the trainers at Living Yoga as well as the Equity Facilitator. And my pronouns are she/her/hers. And so I am the newest member of Living Yoga. I joined about a month ago. And over this short time that I've been working with the organization, I've been closely working with our two other trainers, Liz and Angelina, to develop a new online offering called Body-Based Resilience, which I'll talk about a bit later in more detail. And I've also been working with Liz and Angelina to create a series of videos on topics related to social justice and equity. And finally, I've been working with Avery to continue our Social Justice Culture Initiative, which is our free monthly program that provides resources and prompts for both self-study as well as group study on topics related to, in particular, racialized trauma. But today, I'd like to share some information with you about our new online tools for body-based resiliency, which is, as Lauren mentioned, one of our primary fee-for-service offerings. So body-based resiliency is a set of tools to help folks build the skills for resiliency using Living Yoga's trauma-informed approach that sort of integrates mind-body exercises and techniques to down-regulate the nervous system and reduce stress and anxiety and feelings of overwhelm. So one of the tools that we've developed is a new 90-minute online presentation, which is what we actually demoed this past Wednesday. And the presentation is about how to recognize and then mitigate the impacts of trauma and stress on our bodies by practicing body-based resiliency tools. So throughout the presentation, we've included several practical mind-body exercises so that participants can learn techniques like visualizing and sensing movements, breath and sounding exercises, and also body-based movements for relaxation. And in addition to this 90-minute presentation, Liz has also put together a resiliency toolkit, which includes lots of really great resources, like links to videos that demonstrate a lot of these mind-body practices that you can do on your own. Many of them are very sort of gentle movements that you can do seated. The toolkit also includes handouts with explanations and visual cues on how to practice body-based resiliency. And there's a lot more in that toolkit as well. I also wanted to say a few words about this shift in language that many of you are maybe noticing that, you know, we're sort of shifting a little bit away from, in terms of language, a little bit away from trauma and towards resilience. And this shift, you know, was discussed with members of the board and with Living Yoga staff. And we felt that reframing our new offering in terms of building resiliency skills might feel a little less alienating for folks who don't necessarily relate to experiences of personal trauma. Even though in our 90-minute presentation, we do offer perspectives on trauma that many people can relate to, especially around how different kinds of trauma feel and are experienced in the body. So we felt that our word choice really matters, and especially now because we wanted to make sure that what we offer and how we do outreach for this offering is really creates availability and accessibility of these mind-body tools, especially during these, you know, unprecedented times of stress and anxiety. Okay, so the body-based resiliency tools that I've sort of briefly gone over, like I said, this is our primary fee-for-service offering. And, you know, we're really hoping that some of you might be interested or able or feel comfortable to help us promote it. And I wanted to just share my screen with you so that I can show you the new webpage that Avery has created. Just bear with me for one second. Okay, so this is the Living Yoga homepage. And if you go to Trainings, the first link you'll see here is Body-Based Resiliency. And this is really a page that has a lot of the information about mind-body tools, about the studies that have been conducted on these various practices. And if you scroll sort of towards the bottom, we have our different levels of offerings, you know. So in terms of scheduling, in terms of pricing, we offer a sliding scale. And of course, we, you know, we offer sort of customization to any organization as well. And I just wanted to point out here that the way that we're doing online outreach is through this page. But organizations can set up, can use this link to inquire more about these body-based resiliency tools. And this is the inquiry form. It's very brief. And once they fill out the form, it's likely that I'll get in touch with the organization. So I'll stop sharing my screen and just talk a little bit about outreach. So, you know, we want to focus our promotion and outreach efforts to organizations and companies that do have the financial means to pay between, you know, 700 and 1,500, which is our sliding scale. And like I said, we're also customizing the offering to fit an organization's need and capacity. And Liz is also offering... And Liz is also offering the the resiliency toolkit that I mentioned before to our program partner sites for their staff. So, you know, your help in spreading the word about the new offering would be really wonderful, and, you know, we'll be sending a follow-up email that will hopefully answer some of your questions in a little bit more depth about body-based resiliency and provide you with some suggestions on how you might promote this within your personal and professional networks. So like if you feel comfortable, you might think about or consider mentioning it to your employer or to any nonprofits that you support or are connected to, any connections you may have with colleges and K through 12 organizations, as well as any connections you may have to media. So these are just some ideas that we were kind of brainstorming about how to do outreach. And like I said, I'll be following up with an email, which will explain the offering in more detail and have some suggestions in there about ways to do outreach and feel free to be creative as well. So thank you all for being here. It's really great to see so many folks engaged, and I look forward to getting to know some of you as we move through this together. So I'd like to invite Chris, our volunteer coordinator, to talk more about some of the other updates.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you. Thanks for being here. Hi. I'm the volunteer coordinator and my pronouns are she/her, although they're feeling a little more like blah blah right now, but but I hope you're doing well, and I've been thinking of all of you. I want to thank you, those of you that have sent messages to our partner sites to send along to our students. Those are much appreciated. And so we're still accepting those. I wanted to let you know that if you'd like to keep sending those, if anything else comes on, you know, comes on your radar, you're welcome to send it my way. I'd love to pass it along. Many of our partner sites can pass along messages. They're just restricted in their, you know, in their capacity to do things like online classes, unfortunately. So so we thought of another way that some folks might like to get involved. Some of you, you know, you are video, you know, technology. I don't want to say geeks, but but you're you're video people, right? You could make a 30-second to one-minute video talking about what you do for Living Yoga and why it's important to you. Kind of along the lines that Mira was talking about, the body-based resiliency, using those tools and what it does for you, or maybe the impact that you've seen it have on the students that you've been teaching for. You could take this video, post it to your own personal social media platforms to get the word out there. And you could tag us, tag @livingyoga for so that we can have that as well and continue to promote it. You could also send it to us, and we would be happy to promote it for you. Remember, you can use a donate link from either your personal resiliency rising page, or you could use, we have a donate button right on the resiliency rising page on the homepage of Living Yoga, so you could use that donate button as well. Messages like these, at times like this, those are the kinds of messages people want to see, right? So if you're one of those people that loves to make videos and or would feel comfortable giving it a try, we'd love to put the word out there that way. So I just want to thank you for being here. Thanks for so many of you that have been asking, you know, emailing and saying, how can I stay involved? And I hope we've offered some ways that you can do that. And now I think we're ready to open up for questions. So if you have a question, please put your name in the chat box, and then we'll go kind of one at a time and have folks unmute themselves and ask their question so that it can be answered by one of us.
So one thing I noticed early on was that Annie had a question regarding recording. Hi, Annie. I like your hat. I'm curious that I'm imagining that you were thinking about recording, like recording teaching. Is that accurate? Just like, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and, okay, so just how to record teaching? So a lot of people are using their personal phone to make an audio recording of a class. Some people are using small recorders and turning it into an MP3. And if you're thinking about simple and most accessible, I would say that is the most accessible way. We've looked into being able to come up with a video that we could send to sites, and most people say that they wouldn't have access to the video. People have asked for DVDs. So if for some reason you have DVDs lying around and you want to mail them places, or you want to give them to us, and we can mail them, that is something that could be useful. Yeah. And then Brittany, you want to unmute yourself?
Yeah, so I was wondering, I know a lot of, like, I've taught a couple yoga classes online, and a lot of studios are doing that. And the capacity to teach a Zoom yoga class, you can have about 100 people there, which is so much more than you can have in a studio. So the potential for income is so much higher. I'm wondering if you've reached out to any studios that could like do class, like certain, offer certain classes where a portion of what people are paying are is donated to Living Yoga, kind of like how Yogathon works.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and I'm going to let Avery talk about that. We do have some people who have set up classes just like that.
Thanks, Brittany. Yeah, I forgot to mention that when I was going over Resilience Rising, but we are attempting to have some online benefit classes. So so for those who aren't familiar with Yogathon, it usually involves like 30 to 40 benefit classes that happen in studios around Portland, which obviously can't happen right now. But but folks are submitting online benefit classes. And there's information on the website about how to do that under the resilience rising pages. And we're kind of, it's, it's, we're being flexible with it. Most people are offering them on Zoom, though we do have a couple folks that have classes they're doing through YouTube. So we're just trying to be flexible and allow folks to use whatever tools they have, as long as we can have some security measures in place to make sure that those virtual spaces stay safe and trauma-informed. So yeah, if you want to chat with me more about that, or I can send you the link if you're interested in sharing that with a studio that you you know of as well, we would love to have those.
Great. So you've got another question that came in from Pam Burton, and she's asking about clarification for expenses and income stream and being able to make a sort of comprehensive elevator pitch to clarify why we need funds and what they're needed for at this time. And I'm going to ask Lauren to answer this one.
Yeah, that's a good question. We have a very lean budget at Living Yoga, and so the vast majority of our expenses are is staff wages. And our work continues right now during COVID, so it has taken a lot of staff time to strategize a pivot that feels trauma-informed and sustainable. Staff time has been developing this new online resource, putting together the brand-new Resilience Rising fundraising campaign in like 48 hours. Thank you, Avery. So we've all still been busy. That's our biggest expense. We also have rent that we are still paying. We have expenses for, like Lori mentioned, software. So we got a Zoom account. We have our volunteer scheduling pro I'm looking into right now. It looks like we might be able to pause payment on that, but we didn't want to lose all of our data. We have our database that we pay for. So there's definitely some expenses that still need to be ongoing and others that I've cut or negotiated a pause on, but the bulk of it is staff time to develop these tools and facilitate trainings and make sure that we stay connected to our community.
Yeah. So I know, yeah, do you have more, Lauren, or is that?
Yeah, I think that sums it up.
I just made sure. So I know Angelina posted to mark your calendar because on May 8, she's going to be offering a class through People's Yoga that is a benefit class, and she also put the link in the chat. So if you're looking to sign up, you can go ahead and just sign yourself up. And right now, there's nobody else who has listed something in the chat, but if you have something either that you want to contribute, okay, Avery, go ahead. Yeah.
I just wanted to weigh in on both of those things. So Angelina's class is now also on Living Yoga's website under Resilience Rising Benefit Classes. So there's a registration link for it there. And then as far as an elevator pitch goes, Pamela, I I have something that I've drafted for those people who are doing fundraising for us for Resilience Rising. I'd be happy to share with you, or I can maybe in the follow-up email, have that little elevator pitch. So even if you're not setting up a fundraising page, if you if you have folks you want to connect with about living yoga, that might be helpful. So I'll include that there, too.
Yeah, and there's some great language on the body resilience, body-based resiliency page, just links to stats on why these tools are so necessary and links to our outcomes. So some of that can be really useful also, depending on who you're pitching to. And I might also just add for for marketing outreach. So when we were doing these trainings in person, some of you might not know, but we've trained county child welfare workers. We've trained K-12 teachers and administrators. We did training for Adidas. We've done trainings for justice workers and law enforcement in Vancouver. So there's, there's, you know, we've already done this with a lot of different sectors, and we've had nothing but positive results. So I'm excited to now have this online resource that really has no geographic boundary. So if you know people who might be interested outside of Oregon, we can serve them now in a way that we haven't before.
A couple other ways this is showing up, too, is that we are reaching out to our current partner sites, asking if their staff is interested in receiving this training free of charge. So not only are we, you know, offering it as a fundraising effort, we're also reaching out to people who have, you know, long-term been connected to Living Yoga and figuring out how can we support you and the people you're supporting. And we have a contract coming up with Clackamas County. And we're saying, okay, well, we don't know exactly when the program's actually going to start, but this is something we can offer you. We want to stay connected to you. And I noticed here, Janelle is saying that she has been teaching a class free of charge to friends and family, and that she feels like it's possible people that have been attending that class free of charge would be wanting to donate to Living Yoga. So I see some heads nodding. Yeah, so there might be other people that feel like, hey, I'm doing that, and there might be some other way. I know somebody gave a donation on my page for $11. Every little bit makes a difference, so don't feel shy. And Anne Brayfield, I know was here earlier. I'm not, there you are, Anne. I see you. You know, Anne is the one who originally got me to start doing the Yogathon page, and I was very shy about doing outreach. And ever since, she said, I will be your first, you know, person to support you, and I have done it ever since, and I am always blown away at people's. A lot of people just feel really honored to be asked, and people get information about the organization and feel good knowing that we are supporting people who otherwise wouldn't receive support.
Can I dive in for a second?
Yeah.
So I'm married to a physician who works at OHSU, and I huge need right now, health workers of all kinds to have access to this. So I would just put a pitch for that. And in terms of PR for the organization to say right now, we're targeting health workers and caregivers to give them the support they need, I think is a boost for everybody because we're sort of, you know, getting on the train to support them. So that would be a question from me.
Yeah, and the first training that's actually coming up that is slated to be next, Pamela, is through Sue's fundraising page, where she has reached out to colleagues that she has who work at OHSU, saying, hey, I'd love to offer this to you and your staff, not only in support of Living Yoga, while they have their financial need, but knowing that these staff members are really in need of these skills. So it's a nice way to dovetail, you know, meeting, meeting needs on both sides.
Yeah, and thank you, Sue, for making that possible.
Yeah. So we're getting close to time here, and I want to have a couple of our board members have the opportunity to speak. So I'm going to pass off to Judy. Go ahead, Judy.
Hello. I am just grateful and happy to see over 50 people in this town hall. I think that's wonderful. We, I've been privileged to be on the board for three years and over the last six weeks, been working a lot with staff and with with other board members and our advisory board. And I've really seen how hard the staff is working to to make these changes so quickly and do it the right way. So I really want to honor them and both in their diligence, but their intelligence and how they're doing it with such care. But I was thinking about it, the the volunteers more than certainly more than the board and certainly more than the staff, the volunteers are really the the heart of the organization, the lifeblood, the feet, the toes, the people that go out and do the work of Living Yoga. So thank you so much for being here and sending your energy to this organization.
I'm going to chime in as well. Hello, everyone. Some of you I know and some of you I don't, and I hope to have an opportunity to meet you all face-to-face sooner than later. And to thank you as well, we have over 50 people in here who care and give compassionately generously. And again, just repeating without none of you, this work wouldn't be possible. And we truly seek to continue to give and be compassionate towards our, towards our community. And I'm just really amazed by the work and by the staff, by the 200 press volunteers in giving, you know, a precious thing, which is your time and love. And I am looking forward to continuing to see that work and thankful and grateful for all of you and bringing that walking the walk and talking the talk and being here together. So I want to thank you all.
Oh, my name's Jessica, and I noticed it doesn't show up on my, on my Zoom. So nice to meet everyone.
So I want to check to make sure there isn't another board member, either current or former, because I see there are some formers that are here that might want to say a word or two just before we close this portion of our time together. Okay. All right. So we're just at about five minutes to noon, and I know that some of you will choose to stay and do more intimate connecting and breakout rooms, and we look forward to that. But for those of you that are here now, and I know some of you are on non-video, which is totally fine. If you decide you want to be put on video so that people can see that you were here, you're welcome to do that now. It's not required. But for this first piece, I'd love for you, I know one of the things that people have been saying in different articles is how challenging it can be via Zoom, because, you know, attention is drawn so many different places to different faces. But I'd love for you to actually use that to your benefit right now to try to scan to see some of the people and/or to look at your participant list for the people who aren't, you know, via video, but that you know there there are here. People have spoken and said that multiple times. And it's incredible that you have chosen to be here today, and I want you to really feel just the connection of other people in the community that has been built over such a long period of time. So thank you so much. And I, you know, to close up, I think it would be great for everyone. I'd love to sit. We're already pretty silent right now, so it's kind of funny to say sit in silence together. But if you feel moved to take your hands and place them somewhere upon your body, perhaps your heart or maybe your low belly. And eyes can be opened or closed. And bring yourself back to when Angelina opened us up and talked about, you know, the sacred work of coming together and of blending all the different aspects of life that come our way, being able to cultivate the capacity to hold the fullness of life. And as you're here now, recognize yourself as an individual, a part of the piece of the web of this organization, and also feeling into the other aspects, other people here and not here who contribute to the well-being both of this organization and to the community at large. And if your eyes are closed, you can open them now. And even though it might be a bit cacophonous, I'm going to invite you to unmute if you want to say something. If you're staying, we're going to love having you here. If you're leaving, we're going to be sad to see you go, but we'll look forward to when we see you again. Yeah, so feel free to unmute and say goodbye if you're headed out. Thank you, Lauren, for your leadership. You're amazing. And all the staff, we love you.
We love you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Amazing. There you are, Janelle. Yeah.
Liz, I had to take off my robe and put a shirt on.
I forgot my robe and to put a shirt on. Oh, my God. Oh, that's nice. Is that Ellie? Yeah, so funny. Nice. Nancy, I liked seeing your puppy there. Very interesting.
Hi, y'all. I have to go, but I just wanted to say it's so lovely to see so many of your beautiful faces. I miss you so much, and I'm just so touched by you all being here. And I hope we can do our work again soon. So thank you.
Thanks, Aunt Lila. Love you.
Bye. I love you all. Take care.
Bye. Mimi, so nice to see you.
So nice to see you, too. What a beautiful gift this morning. I love you all.
Love you too, Mimi.
Miss you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you all. I'm going to head out.
Okay, Adrienne, thanks for spending your time here.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Thank you, Liz and Chris and Angelina and everyone. So happy to be part of this beautiful team. And I'm so happy to see Chris standing.
Yeah. Standing up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for those of you that are still remaining here, Lorene is going to help us to stay connected to one another and to get into smaller groups where perhaps you might want to share a little something, and then we'll come back together.
Okay, so you should be invited to a breakout room.